Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to the January 19th, 2016 Vista Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Rosler, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Charlie, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Fleming.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Jackal.
Here.
Commissioner Rosler.
Commissioner Looney.
Student Commissioner Rutabish. And Student Commissioner Acevedo. Thank you. All present.
Thank you, Ms. Charlie. Commissioners in front of you are the minutes from the January 5th, 2016 meeting. If there are no changes, I'd like to see a motion, please. Commissioner Jackal, followed by Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you. I move approval of the minutes is submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. This evening, we'll do a hand vote for the approval of the minutes. So all those in favor of the minutes, approval as they stand, please raise your hand. Please let the record show that the minutes are approved as submitted. Ms. Chow, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
Good evening, Chairman Kramer. No changes tonight.
If there's anyone here to speak on anything other than what's on this evening's agenda, and this evening is a workshop, a community workshop on parking, please fill out a speaker slip and bring it forward. Seeing I have none, Ms. Chow, are you ready for this evening's workshop?
I'm ready.
All right.
All right. Well, good evening, Chairman Kramer, planning commissioners, Patsy Chow, City Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, what we're going to be doing tonight as a planning commission workshop, a community meeting on the parking code update, will do a little different format from the planning commission meetings that we typically have had in the past. And what I mean by that is we'll still have formal presentation by staff consultant. What I would like to do is engage the audience as an open floor discussion towards the end or the latter half of the meeting, after the consultant myself have had a chance to go over some slides. And so, if I may, we will follow that format, and we had dialogue, a good dialogue discussion at the last meeting, so which I thought we would try to duplicate this time.
So we should hold our comments until both you and the consultant give their presentations, correct?
Sure. But if you have questions and you feel like it's a good time to ask, feel free to do that, too. I think we want to keep it informal if we can.
Okay.
I know that that's not common, but it's something that we just wanted to open dialogue on the parking issues, so see how that works out.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me okay? Maybe not. Can you hear me okay? All right. I know we're not that far, but is it okay? You guys can hear me all right? Okay. Well, maybe this is... Yeah, it's a little fuzzy. Maybe I'll just hold on to this. Might be better. That way, you guys aren't going to be like, "Oh, God, it's static." So I wanted to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. It's a community meeting, a workshop on the parking code update. And actually, you know what? Maybe, yeah, let's do this. This is... One, two, three. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, that's much better.
All right, cool. This is much better, right? Otherwise, you guys are going to get like ear pain this afternoon, this evening anyways. So I'd like to again welcome you all to our second meeting on the parking code update. I thank you for being here tonight, taking time of your schedules to be here to listen to discussion on the parking code update. Again, I'm Patsy Chow. I'm the city planner. I'm the staff working on the parking code update. And with me here tonight, we have Stefan Turoff from Walker Parking Consultants. They've been hired by the city to help us with the parking code update effort. So we're very fortunate to have Stefan with us here tonight. Walker Parking has been helping cities throughout California, up and down the state, with parking code updates, regulations. So they're really the experts. And so again, we're fortunate to have them here. And I know, I've recognized some of your faces, but I don't know if any of you or all of you came to the last meeting. By your shorthands, can you tell me if you were at the last meeting in November? Oh, great. We got some folks that were there at the last meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. So thanks for coming back for the second meeting. I appreciate that. Some of the things that you're going to hear tonight are perhaps reinforcement of what was mentioned at the last meeting. But just bear with us. We just want to bring everybody on the same page so that we can continue the discussion and be on the same playing level field. And I'm going to go over some information, some background information about the process itself and where we've been. So let's start by looking at some of these, the information here that I have up on the PowerPoint here. So a little bit of background information on the parking code update. The update started at last year, September, and we have allocated a total of three community meetings and workshops, which we began, we started it back in November. The first meeting we had on the 18th in the community room. And today, we're here, obviously, and we have one more meeting before the council, which will be a similar type of workshop meeting before the city council on February the 2nd at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. The last time we did this was back in 1987, so approximately 20 years. So it's been a long time. And we realized that since that time, a lot of things have changed in our community. Development patterns throughout the city have changed. The opportunities for infill development have come and gone. So a lot of things throughout, whether commercial, industrial, or residential development for that matter. And also redevelopment projects, which unfortunately, we don't have redevelopment funds available, or redevelopment itself has, or the big R, has been taken unfortunately away from the cities in California. But nonetheless, a lot of that's happened over the years, and none of it, you know, we discount, obviously, because it's all part of the growth and where we've been. As far as the main objectives of the parking code update is, and the question is really, why are we doing this study right now? And why is this important? Well, it is very important for the city as we look at parking as part of development and how it helps us move forward when we think about economic development. So essentially, on the first bullet, it's the opportunity so that we can remain competitive in our community when we compare to other jurisdictions in San Diego County, and whether we are attracting the right land uses or desirable land uses into our community. With that in mind, we look at our general plan, you know, the blueprint for the city. What do we say in there about economic development? And what are we doing in terms of parking considerations related to economic development and trying to revitalize areas throughout the city that perhaps are underutilized, areas that could be improved, so that we can expand our economic base in the city and continue to promote smart growth throughout the city of Vista? All of this process, and with all that in mind, we are currently engaging this update process that based on real data, or actual data and real data based on Urban Lands Institute agencies or that are familiar with parking ratios, and how do they play a role in what we do right now, based on data, and actual collection of data for Vista, too. So it's real data, actual data, and Stefan will be talking more about that in his presentation. Now, no committee meeting is complete without a quiz. So for those of you that were here last time, and I remember who raised your hands. Now, I'm not going to pick on you, but for everybody in the audience, really, it's, I just thought of three questions, and whoever thinks they have, you know, the answer pretty safe or pretty comfortable doing it, please raise your hand. And whoever's the first one, if you get it right, I have a little prize over here. So, all right. Parking is a free commodity, true or false?
False.
Sorry, I got to look back here, too. I'm sorry. This is not fair, huh? The commissioners are entitled to do this. Who raised their hand first? Because I had my back to the commission, I'm sorry.
He raised his hand.
Mike? Okay, go ahead. And the winner takes home a granola bar. Oh, your dinner? Why did I think of that? That was awesome. Thank you. All right, next question.
You should have thrown it.
I know, I should have thrown it. I'm not that adventurous, I guess. Construction cost per parking space, surface lot, can be anywhere between $3,000 and $4,500, true or false? Raise your hand. True. Nice, Terry. All right. Here's one. I'm not going to throw it at you. All right, the last question. Here's your chance. A minimum parking requirement is a local government mandated number of parking spaces that a property must provide for a given land use, true or false? Raise your hand. Go ahead.
True.
And the answer is correct. Here you go. Commissioner Rosler. Here you go. I have three bars left, if anybody is hungry and wants it, because I just brought a box. I'm sorry. It's limited supply, I guess. All right, so the next slide is, what I wanted to do is just to recap the results from our last community meeting, because for those of you that were there, we talked a lot about a lot of stuff about parking. A lot of things got repeated, but I thought I would just bring up some of the main ones that actually were repeated over time. We should require garages for parking, not storage. Remember that? A lot of parking spaces downtown, but not enough lighting. It's unsafe. We don't want to park there, so we need more lighting. There's concern with multifamily apartment projects, not enough parking. Again, couples have two cars, not one. That was kind of a repeated comment in the last meeting. There's concern about too many parking spaces being required of developers, and therefore to be able to, we got to be able to create more walkable neighborhoods and rely on non-street parking, which believe, people believe to be more convenient anyways, and perhaps maybe we should charge for it. Okay. Adopt realistic parking ratios. Families have more than two and a half cars per family or unit. Adopt reality. So what is happening out there? Need more enforcement. Again, with the issues of people parking on the street, not parking their garage, using the garage as storage, et cetera. Street parking, restricted to 30 minutes parking spot for the businesses, perhaps? People are taking up space. They're parking longer than is allowed. They are taking space next to a business where they're not in that business. So what do we do in those cases? And one person said, and quote, "I hope we don't reject the building of good things because of parking issues." So there's like across the board, different things that came up, and some of the things, again, that I put on this slide were things that kept repeating itself in the last meeting in November. We also did last time, which is the slide, which is briefly what's on your mind regarding parking. And for those of you that were there last time, we kind of spent like two to three minutes kind of going around the room and letting people speak, you know, their mind as far as what they saw as concerns regarding parking. So what I like to do is spend like a couple, three minutes or whatever, but something fast, just to throw ideas before Stefan takes over, because I wanted to get us thinking of what do you have in your mind in terms of parking concerns, so that at least as we kind of go through the night and hear stuff from Stefan, we kind of have this idea in our heads and where we're going with it, and so we can come back to the concerns, hopefully, at the end of the meeting. So I'm going to actually, we can start right now, and whomever has stuff, Mike, Michael has, I'm going to hand the microphone over here, and I'm just going to use this one instead. And then we can just kind of go around the room, just raise your hand, and then we're going to come to you with the microphone. Am I on? Oh, great. Thank you. So anybody, if you got, raise your hand if you have any concerns. Terry, go ahead. We've got one right here.
...by state or county or whatever, to how many spots that can be in a housing area or an apartment complex, because every time it comes up to these guys, well, that's how many they can have.
Yes, definitely.
Require four?
That's why we're here tonight.
Can we change that locally?
Yes. That's what we're looking at right now, is our parking code update at the local level. So all the ratios, parking ratios that we have in our code right now, that's the whole idea of the update, is to modify them or not, depending on whether there's a need for it or not. So, good question. Anybody else in the audience? Just thoughts, concerns that you have, things that you wanted to ask and you want to ask in a workshop? This is your chance. Commissioners, feel free to as well.
Concern that I've had, and I've raised it in several of our meetings, is to do with multi-family apartment complexes or condo complexes, but multifamily uses, where we have ADA handicap parking, and I would like that calculation separate, because not all apartment complexes have ADA, people who need the handicap parking, and then it makes it for, you don't have enough if you're...
inclusive.
Yes, if it's inclusive.
True. True. That's a good comment. Yes, we heard that many times before in past meetings. So that's definitely the opportunity to do that here. Go ahead, Commissioner Jackal.
Thanks. Kind of piggybacking on that, we've had a number of apartment proposals come before us that are, and I don't want to say this in a pejorative way, but are claiming to be mixed use, but they're not really. They're apartments. And I think we should not allow them to use the mixed-use parking ratio when it's not really mixed use.
Good point.
Good point.
I was, that's one thing I was going to say, too. I think it's very important that we, if they're going to build a multifamily unit, a mixed-use property, it should be multifamily parking guidelines in there. The other thing is, just quickly, I want to see that we have an adequate turnover of spots in the business area, so that the customers have got places to park, that they can get close to the business. I know that when I was down there, it was very common to have people that worked across the street from your park in front of your shop and be there all day, you know. So I'd like to see something like that.
That's great. Yep. Good comment. Thank you.
Patsy, two concerns on the big commercial lots. One is the amount, excuse me. We saw in Lowe's that we put, we allowed the Bevmo to go in there, and the parking seems to work just fine with those two uses, and Lowe's didn't suffer from the turnover, loss of spaces. The other one is Target, and it's the design and layout. I think I understand from my experience why the major uses want a big parking field in front of their store, but when you have to go in and have a secure dis route to find a space, I think we can do a better job of designing on that. And then the other comments on the multifamily that the commissioners made, I agree with.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's see, any other comments?
About the audience? Nope. There's a gentleman right there, right behind. Thanks, Michael.
Good evening. I was here last week, and city council was approached with a project on, I think it's 2100 Ten Marco Boulevard.
Oh, Vesta Palomar.
That was going to be hotels and condos. Now, if you put a hotel on a piece of property along with condos, is that considered mixed use, or is that multifamily? So that is considered mixed use.
That is, that is mixed use, yeah. Correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. Okay. Any other comments? Oh, Terry, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
I was just made aware that if it's affordable housing, you have to go by state law.
The state does have parking requirements, and if they are, let's say, applying for density bonus, and they would like to use the parking ratios at the state level, then we are obliged to follow whatever the state says. We don't have the ability to say no. Yep. That is a huge... Yes, it is a huge impact locally, because it's almost like we don't have control over that. That's true. Any other comments? You guys are too quiet back there. No comments?
Question, Ms. Chow.
Yes.
For the state mandated lower income housing, are the parking requirements then significantly lower than what our current parking standards are?
If we compare it to the multifamily and the citywide parking, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because our citywide, our multifamily parking is pretty high, and Stefan's going to go over the numbers and benchmarking with other cities even.
Okay.
Commissioner Garretson.
What kind of enforcement is there? I mean, what would prevent somebody from building apartment or whatever, and the requirement, say, 30 spaces, and, you know, they know they're going to have 60, so the other 30 are going to have to go to the neighbors. What kind of enforcement do we have?
If I understand correctly, in your scenario, the number of parking spaces required are 30? You started at 30? And they want to provide more?
No. There are really 60 cars that are going to go there.
Oh, okay. So where are they going to park?
So where are they going to park? But where's the enforcement? It's my understanding now, there is no enforcement.
That's the crux of the dilemma, is where do they go? And if they are parking on the street, that's creating a lot of the concerns that last time at the last meeting, and both yourself and Commissioner Fleming were there, where a lot of the folks said, you know, they're just parking on the street. And we've heard that many times, right, throughout all the other projects that are currently going through the pipeline. So, yeah, it's an enforcement issue, and that's something that we either tackle it or we don't, or we have a way to do it. But again, that's why we're having the discussion.
One of my, one of my friends recently said that they have three cars. They have one, one spot that is dedicated to them, so the first two people that come go to the public parking.
Oh.
And then the last one goes to the assigned parking.
Sure.
So, you know, where's the enforcement?
Yep. Good point. Commissioner Looney.
Patsy, on the multi-use, I know in building departments, there's a separate building code for, let's say, commercial or restaurant use, and then there's a separate building code for residential use. And it might be worth our while to look at the policy to see if we could partition the parking requirements into each specific use as well, as does the building code, just as a way to maybe soften the effect of so many cars on that, on a particular lot.
So in terms of the different land uses that we have, and maybe further specific than that, than currently what we have, general categories?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay.
Because as we've seen, they come in with a mixed-use, mixed-use project, but there's only one, you know, they're going to take the lesser amount of parking spaces to meet code.
Right.
When it really doesn't meet the demand.
Yeah.
And if we somehow maybe partition even that building or the parking code to accommodate the specific proposed use of the building.
Sure. That would be probably more realistic, perhaps, in line with Commissioner Fleming.
Yeah, I had a question about the minimum, minimum number required by code. These are minimum numbers. Can we require, when it comes before us, can we put a stipulation that they have to have more than what the, what the code requires?
We could, and that's...
Or are we restricted to that number?
We could. And minimum is exactly what Stefan's going to go over, is a minimum is a minimum, and they could do more. Now, we, us asking, or the city asking for more and saying, typically, minimum requirement is what you're going to find throughout cities in California. That's, that's just purely going with the code. But I'm going to let Stefan address the minimum parking requirements and how that plays a role in that or not. So I think with, let's see, anybody else had comments? One more comment, and then we're going to move on, and I'll let Stefan take over. Go ahead, sure. No problem.
Apartment complexes, and you're saying that there's a, there's going to be a minimum requirement. Is that only for new builds?
Minimum...
Someone that brought up those things about the thing last time.
Yes, I remember. Thank you for coming back. The minimum requirements, they're currently found in our code, so we're continuing unless there's a change in how we do or strategize it in our code, in our parking code.
But the existing buildings, will they be affected? I mean...
No. The existing buildings, as if they're built, and I think the one that you manage, the complex that you're in, we're not going to go after, you know, the existing projects and say, "Now you need to comply." That would not be fair.
Wouldn't it be fair? I have a street up there that's so full of cars that it's a wonder people don't get killed.
Yeah, there's, there's things...
No parking zones.
Yeah, there are things that we talked, at the last meeting, we were talking about how it's triggered by some action or development action, right? So that it comes before the city, we have to look at standards. And so that's what would trigger it, but we wouldn't do a broad brush throughout the city and say, "Okay, now suddenly, all multifamily projects in the city, you all need to comply with the new parking code." We wouldn't do that.
I understand that, because a lot of places don't have the land.
Exactly.
We have to have the land.
Correct.
And I have two on the other side of me, and that would relieve, oh my God. Because I have, most of my people have two cars.
Mm-hmm.
And so they park one. I have 13 parking places and 22 units.
Yes, I remember. You have very limited parking.
It's like, that's why I was wondering if it's going to apply to the older buildings.
Yeah, not, not if there is no discretionary or what we call it, basically a request for permit of some sort that would trigger the need for us to look at parking. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Sure, no problem.
Patsy?
All right, yes. And we need to move on, otherwise we're going to...
One, one last thought?
Yes.
The multifamily units that are going to go in, within the service radius of the transit station, I would, it's going to be difficult, given the comments that are here, but I'd like to see them given some type of a break if they provide for ridership on the transit.
Okay.
I'm quite sure how that's going to work out, but if they can, if they can provide transit passes, then give them a break on their parking spaces.
Okay. As an incentive, as a way to help reduce if they wanted it to or needed it. All right. All right. So now I'd like to do is turn it over to Stefan, and let me see, what do we have on the next slide? So Stefan, you're up. And basically, Stefan's going to take over from here. We're going to come back at the end again for discussion on this, but...
Sure, I think that's fine. Thank you. Let's see, I do have... Is yours working? I think so. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Maybe I'll turn this off. Thank you. Okay. You can all hear me? Okay. All right. Members of the commission, thank you very much for having us and allowing us to engage on this, this study with you. As Patsy mentioned, and I do see a few people from last time, but our firm, my name is Stefan Turoff, I'm here from Walker Parking Consultants. We, for many years, we were primarily an engineering and design firm for parking structures. And just to give you some context, because I think this is helpful, but as we designed and built more parking, the question always came up, whether local government, universities, you know, shopping centers, how much parking is enough? And within that context, more and more of what we did became how many spaces is enough? And we began working more and more, you know, with code requirements. A lot of great questions. This is a big issue, but, you know, minimum parking requirements, which are a floor? I want to remind you that when you have a minimum parking requirement, it never precludes whoever's building from building more. And, you know, we work with big, you know, national retailers, restaurants, multifamily, and if the, if the market is there, if they say, "Our, you know, it will help us," we think that we need more spaces. There's always that option. Now, I think generally, about 75% of developers and builders build to the minimum requirement, which in some ways suggests that at least they think that's enough. But this is a complicated issue. Parking is like whack-a-mole. There was a lot of talk about on-street parking. On-street and off-street go together. But we'll talk about some of this briefly. We'll talk about how we are performing this study today. What are minimum parking requirements? As commissioners, I'm sure you've had that come in front of you a number of times. The goals of minimum parking requirements, the benefits, the impacts, the unintended consequences. Is this very loud, by the way? Is this too loud?
No, no.
Okay. We have come up with some preliminary recommendations, which we just want to set out there. And then talk to you all stakeholders and talk a little bit more about our status and timeline. So just about every city in America has minimum parking requirements for virtually every use. You know, how many spaces do you have to build for an apartment, for a restaurant, for a shopping center, for a bowling alley, for a mortuary, for a, you know, tennis courts? And it's, I mean, across the board, it's out there. And they tend not to be very heavily researched. And typically, especially when a city's starting out, perhaps like Vista, you know, fifty, fifty-five years ago, you look at the city next door to you, and that's how those have been set. More and more, especially in California, as land gets more scarce, more expensive, traffic, streets get more crowded, people are trying to identify more precisely what a parking requirement should be. So our methodology, we have a lot of data, databases, based on all the studies we've done for different land uses at peak hours. But everybody, you know, every city is different. We work all around the state, all around the country, as Patsy mentioned. So we wanted to collect some data here, but also our base ratios for suburban land uses. They are, and that's usually where we start for resident data. But in the state, we also have a lot of data. So we did that at a number of different land uses, shopping centers, restaurants, multifamily. But we did that in October, in the fall, when we started late summer for our study. So with our models, each land use has a different need. For example, retail, they plan for Christmas, most businesses in Christmas time. If you plan for Black Friday for a retail shopping center, then three hundred and forty-eight days a year, you'll have that in your parking space, a lot of them. Same with their apartments, same with others. So we haven't designed that test, we always said, what are we building for? Are we building to the average? Are we building to the D? You know, how do we decide what's the right number? And that's not a strict order decision. For retail, it's busy, it's busy, it's out. So, you know, we can go into all the technicalities, but basically, we could count on a nice day, look at weekday and weekend, Thursday is usually the busiest weekday, Saturday is usually the busiest weekend. And then we said, what are the business months? Usually December for both things. For example, you know, we were out in San Pablo, movie theater. For movie theaters, you live in the new year. That's the bigger time. For telephons, it's January, and everybody has that revolution. I mean, it's incredible, the parking demand for telephons is, you know, fifty percent in January. So keeping that in mind, we collected data from our city. We modeled for peak demand. We looked at the parking requirements of neighboring cities. Because this is primarily, and there's a lot of actual parking requirements, about economic competitiveness, about if you're requiring this many spaces and San Marcos or Carl's Bed or Ocean Side is requiring a different number, that's just a major cost consideration. Cost of the land, the cost of construction costs. So we want to see where this business fall compared to your neighbors. And are your requirements appropriate? So looking at all those things, we then made a comparison, so local government, you need higher rates yields, that's the off-end for multifamily, local radio, for example, maybe for retail, for restaurants. So the minimum parking requirement, which really does impact not only individual development or what a city looks like, and I'm sure they come in front of you all the time, but it is a government mandate. Typically, it's local government, in ninety-five, ninety-nine, ten thousand, ten hundred, that says, you need X number of parking spaces, usually for a thousand square feet, whatever. So it is a mandate, it's ruled, and it controls lots of development. And ten years ago, I worked on hospital studies, another part of the county. There was a major expansion they wanted to do, they did not squeeze in the parking, and it really hurt, you know, hospitals, like the campus. And I remember, over ten years ago, they did a lot of parking, and developed, sometimes more than anything, for good and for bad. So it's difficult or impossible to open up a new business or build, you know, a new use without needing a parking requirement, unless you really can show that there are reasons you don't need to. Not enough parking, typically, of building a business, it cannot open. So years ago, there are a lot of anecdotes, but we did work with Disney and Michael Eisner, they were meeting, because it's more of all those parking, you need more of all those parking spaces, more qualified parking, because the amount of parking is determining so much of what they were doing in terms of rides, facilities, and California events. So minimum parking requirements, again, just about everyone has them. Older cities or older sections of city don't. Typically, I forget it for a half different deal, in downtown, whether it's the Gaslamp District, whether it's your downtown here, or the deal, and operates very differently than the rest of the city. You know, older places, Ocean Side, and Del Mar, for instance. But we look at parking requirements, and it's a little hard to see. But typically, we say parking requirements per thousand square feet. Now, here's something interesting. Okay, we say usually, a parking space is provided three hundred square feet. So usually, it's about, say, eighteen feet long by nine feet wide, and then you have to have certain numbers of square meters to get into that parking space. So all the others, three hundred square feet, that's a little low. But three hundred square feet, any requirement that you have that's more than three and a third, three and a half per thousand, your requirement has to be more parking than built. And we'll show that a little bit, but you have plenty of cases, most cases, where actually the parking lot is far bigger than anything you have in the city. And that's part of the minimum parking requirement. But that's why a lot of cities have, you know, maybe it's nuts for most of their land, and they go to the parking. That's how it works. And it drives a lot of things, you can figure traffic, you can just spread it out, you know, when you talk about walkability, you can, for a lot of things. This is a footprint of the city. I remember going through the climate and the four B, so I'm being on a hill. On one side was the oldest side of the city, developing four parking requirements, down towards, you know, Valdova, Valdova, the harbor. The other side was back, was back nine, and all that. Looked completely different. One side was horse spread out, one side has built parking requirements, one side, well, that's an extreme example, but it has a huge impact. So most parking requirements are per thousand square feet. Some are per seat, for example, like theaters, churches, things like that. But if we look, for example, we have community shopping center, basically something that's not a mega center. And we see pretty consistently, of course, the requirements, visit for Ocean Side, five stations per thousand square feet. San Marcos, four stations per thousand square feet. Doesn't sound like a lot less, but if you're taking a thousand spaces in these, in Vista or Ocean Side, you have to provide a thousand spaces. In San Marcos, you have to provide eight hundred. Did the math right there. But that's, once you talk about big development, you're talking about a lot of square footage, a lot of construction cost, and a lot of land in your city. What else do we have? The restaurants typically, our model and our findings typically show that parking requirements tend to be higher than actual land. Restaurant is often the opposite. Now, here we see, restaurant, you can see that you require about twelve and a half per thousand, four and a half spaces. Far more than, but any other land use. It depends on the size of the restaurant, the type of restaurant, if Carl's Bed is a little lower, ten per thousand. Ocean Side, they base it just on the T area, not the kitchen. So we have to do a little population, we have apples, apples. San Marcos, Ocean Side, even Vista, you're about the same, twelve and a half, thirteen, thirteen and a half. Carl's Bed is less. Carl's Bed, San Marcos, a lot of restaurants. I won't go through the entire, but you see office, medical office, banks, multifamily. This is your general multifamily. Now, those are just, we've heard a lot of complaints about spillover here. But your requirement, your requirement for a typical multifamily, it's not a special district, it's high. Relatively high, what we've seen, relatively high to what we've got recommended based on our data collection and other places. And relatively high to what we saw out there. The question is, what is being built for this requirement, and what is being built in others? So then we even have churches, we went to the House of Porcupine with that. Now, I think if you want to elaborate on this a little bit, but again, your multifamily zone, your requirement is higher than just about anything you see. You know, studio or one bedroom, nearly two and a half space. It's your two and a half cars. Now, keep in mind, this is all an average, when you require this. So some households will have less, some households will have more. You know, the studio that has almost two and a half space. I remember, before I got married, I had one car. My old grandfather gave me the second car. I had two spaces for a one-bedroom unit, and I kept them both. Had I not, I probably would not have. There's, you know, when you have the spaces, they tend to get used. When you don't have the spaces, they may get used also, and there'll be spillover. But typically, this is an average, you know, three bedrooms, three cars per three bedrooms. Now, some people may have three cars, some people may have less, some people may have more. But this is, the idea is that this averages out. Now, your mixed-use district, your mixed-use district in your downtown, specifically plants, have less than your multifamily zone. But keep in mind, we also say there's a little bit of self-selection here. Where parking, multifamily prices may reflect in part how many spaces there are. I mean, that's additional square footage, it's additional land, it's additional construction cost. There's some self-selection in terms of what goes on, partly based on price, but partly based on making an avalanche vehicle.
Stefan, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but these numbers you're showing us now, you're saying this is existing condition, based on your survey?
No, pardon, this is the existing requirement.
Those are the existing, based on our current code. And the only reason, sorry, Stefan, I'm just gonna interject here for a second. The reason why I wanted to put that up is because as a result of the last community meeting, there are a lot of questions about, well, what about the Avalon project? What about the Breeze Hill apartments? How come that project got that, and how come this project? And I realized that because of the different zones, because, for instance, the Breeze Hill or the Avalon is a mixed-use zone, it required less parking overall. Although meeting the project, meeting the parking ratio requirements less than the 2.33 that you see up above on the multifamily zone, because it's in a different zone. So I just wanted, for the benefit of the folks that were at the last meeting, just wanted to clarify that, because I kept getting the same question over and over throughout the meetings about that. And it's important to identify and make sure that everybody understands that there are different zones, different ratios, the way we have it right now.
This is the average of all those different zones for the city as a whole?
Not an average. These are the parking ratios for the particular type. Like studio is required at 1.25 per studio unit, 1.5 for one bedroom, the mixed-use. So we're not averaging anything, these are strictly from the code.
Gotcha.
I would say, yeah, these are requirements. And how do we talk about parking? There's, we say, how many parking do we need? Well, there's per code, there's per actual demand, which typically is what we work in. And then there are all other ways that you can figure out how much you need. What this is, this is the requirement right now in the city. And what we're looking at is how much demand there is, what is appropriate to require. Because requirement, it is going to vary based on the type of building, it is going to vary based on location. So we try as much possible to get this right for all property, everything that's going to be built. This is the current requirement, the ratio is the ratio of requirement. Thank you for stopping, and there's a lot here that I don't want to go over too quickly. So why do you have parking, minimum parking requirement? Almost always, it prevents spillover. You build something, you say, it generates a certain amount of cars, and those cars typically are going to go somewhere. Now, it's the amount of parking you provide can have some effect on how many cars are gonna generate.
Yes.
It does. There's something to that. But also, if you have available street parking, if you have, you know, other uses nearby, like if there are cars that spill over, they spill over. So it's a little bit of a balancing act. But the intent is to prevent spillover. However, the number of spaces that is needed, okay, depends on a technical determination of what's enough. And I've been talking about enough in terms of, say, the busiest day, you know, the average apartment, just one is enough, because we can talk about building more and more, but there is a cost to it, and there is an impact to it. The number of spaces required traditionally has been somewhat arbitrary in one side of this all. So we hear about worst-case scenarios, but it's tough to say this is how many parking spaces we need, and this is gonna be the requirement for a building. We do the best we can. All, here's another thing, people don't always want more spaces. When they think about that they're the problem, that they're, you know, I don't have enough parking, it's not so much, oh, there aren't too many spaces out there. It's, you know, even the shopping center or the downtown, it's that, I have to park right in front of my destination or in front of my destination. And the challenge of that is that when you require more, you're not providing spaces right there. You're providing spaces on the surface, where maybe there were spaces available. Now, in a little denser area, that's true for structure parking. You end up requiring more on the top of the structure, at the bottom of the structure. In a place like this, that maybe you require more further out. And very often, people build those spaces up there, I know they're there, that I want, or my wife wants, or the other talent, is wants it right up front. And a minimum parking requirement won't necessarily, won't lock them solid that far. So we talked about spillover. Again, if you have a red curb, we worked in Ventura County, suburban Los Angeles County, where everything was red curb, everything was major arterial. And they were worried about parking requirement, but the fact that it was really that developed, either it had enough parking and parking there, or not, there was not going to be any spillover. Now, there is, there is some spillover, we're aware of that, we have to be careful of that. So again, why not require more spaces? Demand for spaces is finite. Typically, the size of the land, there are only so many people considering a red curb. I was gonna say, only so many people considering parking, but as, as land prices, housing prices get more, they're expensive in California. And you have a major university, this stuff everywhere, you do get more people in there. But at a certain point, that's finite. So only so much more parking typically is needed. It's not just more is better, more is better. Parking is often a dead space, a limited use. The last meeting, you talked about spaces behind, I think behind the car, or behind San Pablo, where you both require spaces, but people don't really use them. And they attract, you know, and absolutely, you know, they attract people sitting in their car. People on skateboards, which is okay sometimes, but, you know, they attract all kinds of unintended behavior. And, I mean, it's open space, and so in California, there's not much to buy. And more parking tends to attract that. It is not used for parking most of the time. And some people who love to park are actually really, they want more open space in the parking, the kind of open space, but it's the kind of open space you're looking for. And remember, as we started out this discussion, more spaces than a minimum can always be built. Whoever you are, for your business, for your restaurant, for renting apartments, if you think you need more spaces, a minimum does not prevent that. And a few cities, they do have maximums, because they say, if you don't want all of our city, probably half a dozen in the United States. Because, again, parking is expensive, most people don't build too much. But the minimum is just the floor. People, you know, once we say this is the minimum, it doesn't mean that people can't build more, it's needed. Now, just an example, this is, I believe this was the center that we gouted. And we found, you know, we have the demand and visits all day, and we bumped it up for the time right before business. And there was still, we predicted, this lot will never fill, not by a long shot. Now, what does that mean? Could more businesses have a center? And somebody mentioned, you know, the best home going into a center? And that's often, but something like, I think we investigated, so much parking is built, could you have more productive land uses for, and productive for business, the visit, productive for the city, the tax pay, or just asshole, you know, we go out there. Look at parking, if you look for oil state, some of these parking cities are so clean, you know, the car is never parking though. That's something to keep in mind, it's not like they're using it today. So why not require more spaces? Cost, as Patsy mentioned, just the construction, three thousand, forty-five hundred, what you figured out for a surface lot, that's not including land costs. You only have parking structures here in Vista, which are very expensive, we built and designed them, and we know that. The land cost, you just, you know, I don't know, the land cost here in Vista, Arco, we looked up on the web, we saw some commercials pay sixty dollars a square foot. So if we take three hundred square feet for parking, they have eighty thousand dollars in land, just for one more state, that adds that, say, four thousand construction, that's twenty-two thousand dollars to be a parking requirement, which is good if you need that space, and good if you're going to keep spilling over. But if you don't need that space, it's a lot. And that's one of the reasons I'm looking at the competitive development perspective. So cost of three, typically constraints and negative impact on your business, that's an improvement, looking at economic development, urban planning, that's, one, be careful to require the right amount, not too few, but not too many. And typical, this is, just to show, and, you know, we look at this in a lot of cases, where driver wants to park usually as close as possible, is inversely reportable at how much it will cost to provide that extra space. So that space right up front, usually is there, it's pretty easy, but once you start having to require land, once you start having to build or do some construction, it's less likely that somebody will want to park there. With multifamily, another one we often see is, there might be spaces plenty... With multifamily, another problem we often see is, there might be spaces plenty sitting in the garage, but hey, if there's a parking street right in front, I don't want to go in there, what do you need to be happy cost? I don't want to, you know, like, my kids' tricycle arrived, my neighbor's tricycle is there, so I'll just park on the street if I want. My space is, we're in DC, and I think of a parking space, that's, that's something that we all don't see, that happens. From, minimum parking requirements can't necessarily address that, because we talked about that on street parking. So, parking requirement in downtown, downtown's still different, and here's an example, we have a lot, and, you know, like downtown, this is a development where there are parking requirements. With a parking requirement, this is what it's going over, like, typically, and that's a two-thirds to one-third requirement, say, if you have, you know, three, four per thousand. But if you say that all parking is provided somewhere else, and not a parking, then you build a lot, and that's where you have the street, where you're looking in, you have street windows, façade, and you don't have that lot. So, any development that you see like this typically is a result of a low parking requirement. These developments that you see like this, sometimes it's parking back, but usually, it's just, it was built, say, in the 40s, in the 30s, before there were requirements. Sharing parking, you know, if we look at this, a movie theater, a bank, one's busy, you know, night and weekend, the other's busy in the middle of the week, you put them together, it's half a foot parking, it's less expensive, you can walk between different things, it's efficient. So this is often what we look at. And that's really, when you have a five per thousand requirement for your commercial centers, that's really, say, some restaurants in the summer retail, and that's true. So we look, put all these things together, we counted cars, we sent out our field staff, and we counted cars in the commercial areas, in restaurants, multifamily, um, office, and this is our preliminary recommendation, but just to get to a sense. So, your, your requirement for a shopping center is five per thousand. We saw this at Village Center, we saw some of the others where you have targets, things like that, and we counted cars on the busiest day, and we bumped it up for the beginning of December, and we still came up to about five and a half, five, pardon, four and a half, 4.6, but there's a lot of restaurants there. So we said, you know, you could go from five per thousand to four per thousand, if you have less than 10% restaurants. So if somebody just wants to build retail, five per thousand, that's high, probably not gonna fail, it's probably something that I make my statement, requirements are more difficult, requirements are more difficult. So we said, you will be fine with four per thousand, if it's not primarily, or if it's only has, if the center that only has a little restaurant. So that's the type of production that we went out, and we saw, you know, demand is not that high here. So office space, and we know, this is, you'd be a lot of office, you build now, you have a lot of office out there, we, for all of these, I think, we're conservatively hot, we're careful, but if we saw a opportunity where it didn't make any sense to keep it high, we're going to reduce it. 3.8 in our data is what is the highest typical office gets, 3.8 thousand, yours is four, why not produce? We don't think it's gonna be, any, you know, anybody goes, and it, it just makes sense. But it, it seemed like the point she's facing for a thousand, that adds up, so we said, okay, you can produce that. Back to some simpler studies in the institution, you have a five requirement, our data says 4.6 again, and it's something, if a bank is an amenity, a savings and loan, a credit to happen to your city rather than go to the next city, why not require less parking? Because we're saying that these are spaces that will not be used. Finally, despite very significant concern about parking required for multifamily, what we saw was that what, the, the multifamily that was generating these models was not built to your high requirement, so you could opt your requiring. But that's first of all, you can't, you can't grandfather, and you can't go into multifamily. You can't, I don't know, it's like the label, it's, you know, it's approved, but typically, if something exists, that's very difficult to change, and typically, there's no, there's no way typically to do that. But for new construction, if we require more, I would say it would be very difficult for people to build that, and, and those are higher requirements, there aren't that many places where that many cars can be generated. Now, maybe, and some people say, oh, I know this person who has this many cars, and that's true, and then it becomes a question, who is responsible? This came up in our last meeting, if somebody has three, four, five cars, is it the city's responsibility to make a parking available there? Is it, you know, for, is it the developer's responsibility? So then, does that cost pass on to everybody, whether they have that many cars or not? Again, if we're looking at an app, and typically, we want to see a certain number of spaces built, but then those people who need it can use it, or those people who don't, do not use it. Because there are hundreds of empty parking spaces. So your requirement is high, that requirement is not the problem, there are other problems here for sure. I think we go in this, so other recommendations, we talked about on the street, enough is enough for your task to do, and we said, you know, that really goes a little bit different direction than what this study was looking at, but on street is, on street and off street go together, where there's spillover, typically you need some policy to say, this will be enforced, this will be monitored, you know, if somebody has more cars, parking spaces, that, if the problem is on street, you're, you usually have to do something on street, and there's only so much to do off street, so sort of, you need to go on your policy to push cars off, you can simply suck so many cars back into your lot, and park them off. So we said, work with residential parking managers to ensure that required residential spaces are used for parking, not storage, storage is a big problem here. Anyplace that's valuable, the people who park on the street, and you can say, for, you know, instead of $100 for a unit somewhere, instead of, uh, selling things that were not, not sold, they can do that. Um, prevent any on-street parking, consider residential parking permits, let's say, there's a certain number of residents that aren't on street, but not everybody, wholesale, you know, gets to park on the street, and it's a free for all, um, some enforcement's gonna help with that, if that's the problem, which it seems to be in some cases, for both of them. So there's a lot out there, there's something, we didn't even touch on, and I didn't even sort of debunk all of the argument, but, but there, I mean, we were thinking about all these things, um, everybody wants more parking, everybody wants convenient parking, there is a cost associated, association with that, and when would we require that, we don't always solve the problem that we've been helping with.
I think that was, yeah, that was the last, so, at this point, thank you, Stephen. Um, at this point, we really wanted to kind of open it up. I just wanted to kind of, now that you've heard and from Stephen on some of the, the basic things, and some of the things that maybe majority of folks probably, quite honestly, myself included, and some of the things, not knowing or being aware of the cost associated with a lot of this, to me was, uh, pretty eye-opening, um, in terms of how that can affect, in a, either positive or in a negative way, I guess, the overall development. So, why don't we, um, just go ahead and start questions, and we'll go back and forth, and then try to answer them as they come up. Christian Carroll.
Hi, okay, Patsy, uh, I have some thoughts and comments, and, uh, it's a good presentation, no, not directly for you, but, um, you know, one of the things you said that caught my attention was that one of the primary interests of, of this study, um, is geared towards economic competitiveness. And, and I think that's, like, true from the city's standpoint, but I would, I would guess that, um, from the general public's standpoint, this is a quality of life issue, not how economically prosperous the city, uh, is going to be based on parking. So, and that's, that's what we're getting from the public, is that all of these parking issues are affecting their quality of life. And I understand that the economic competitiveness is, comes into play when you're talking about a commercial center, or a restaurant, uh, or a bank, and those types of things, but I think you gotta lean towards what's the best for the community and the quality of life, when you're talking about multifamily and residential uses. And, in my opinion, the mixed-use parking standards, and I'll call it an allowance, is flawed, and it's drastically allows drastically more, uh, less parking than a multifamily, um, standard. And, and I guess that's because of the, the theory that in the mixed-use, you're gonna have commercial and residential, and there's gonna be overlap, and all the people are at work, we're gonna be using the commercial, and we're not getting that. So we're getting multifamily and mixed-use, uh, zoning. And, um, I think it's having a negative impact on the projects.
Sure, it's unintended consequences, I think, of the mixed-use zone. Um, if I can just make a comment, the quality of life, absolutely correct. I think there's gotta be, uh, strike a balance between, you know, whether it's the city looking at it from an economic development perspective, or whether it's the community looking at it from a quality of life. Um, I like to think or hope that there is a balance that can be achieved in however we look at this, uh, but I hear loud and clear, it's not one or the other, I guess, or, or hopefully it's a balance in between somewhere in there.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not happy about giving, uh, a project basically a parking bonus, because their multifamily project happens to be in a mixed-use zone. I think if you're not providing a certain percentage of commercial, uh, element to meet the mixed-use zone, you shouldn't be getting the mixed-use parking.
The mixed-use rate, sure, I understand.
And th- this is just, to me, a huge loophole in, in that standard.
Yep. Good comment, thank you.
Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, along that same very line you're talking about there, that the multi-use numbers are considerably less than the, than the multifamily. The que, one of the questions I had, is there a, an additional number that's based on the square footage of the res, of the commercial that's in the building? In other words, you've got a, they get a break for the-
Residential.
For the living part.
Right.
But is, do we add to that, if they've got 4,000 square feet of retail in that, is there a number that's added to that, based on that?
On the mixed-use zone, I'm trying to go off of my memory here, the, um, the ratios being less than the multifamily, on the commercial, I don't know, is there less, it is, John's nodding, yes. So it looks like there is a difference between that and what is citywide, commercial-wise, which then, there lies, you know, the question, I guess, are we doing the right, correctly, as far as the mixed-use being much less, what's, why is that? Because if we're not getting true mixed-use, it's kind of defeating the purpose.
In, in that case, what I'd like to see added to this in some way, is a certain percentage of the, what you're building has to be retail or commercial before you could get that rate. I mean, it wouldn't necessarily have to be 100%, 100% multifamily, but if they had a certain percentage of the building, uh, how would that fall in there?
And I think that's a great idea, and we're gonna explore that, we've talked about that. The problem with that citywide is that the mixed-use zone spreads all up and down, commercial corridors on Santa Fe, and throughout some of the other business areas, where commercial might work, and where commercial might not work.
Right.
So what we are thinking about, and I'd like the input of the commission on this, is, we understand the mixed-use zone, residential parking requirements are a concern, and that we wanna look at changing those, so we're gonna definitely go down that road. In doing that, we wanna look at, you must put commercial in multifamily projects, or mixed-use projects. And if we do that, we have to look at where the mixed-use zone is. Because if you have a mixed-use requirement, where you have to have ground floor commercial below, you know, residential on the second and third floor, that doesn't work in areas where there's not a lot of activity on the street, really urban areas, like you see in the core of the downtown. As you stretch south on Santa Fe, or north on Santa Fe, you're gonna find areas where you force a developer to do that, they build retail on the ground floor, the residential units get occupied, and then you have vacant commercial space for years and years. And if you wanna see examples of that, drive around San Marcos, 'cause that's a requirement that they have, and a lot of their commercial space is empty. So what we propose to do is, come back and look at the mixed-use zone standards, look at increasing the residential requirements, and then if you really wanna have areas where you have commercial ground floors a requirement, let's look at where we wanna put those, so that we think they're in the right place.
Specific areas, yeah. I think that's a wonderful idea, and I would support that.
Yeah, and the only-
Very, very large.
Sure, I'm sorry, sorry for interrupting.
Go ahead.
The, um, the only thing I was gonna add is because we're talking the citywide parking requirements, but there's also the mixed-use zone itself, um, the timing, I'm sure is a big factor, thinking, is this all gonna happen at the same time? I'm not quite sure, I don't, I don't have, at least I have not discussed with John in detail, as far as how that's gonna all happen, if it's gonna affect downtown, or is it just a mixed-use zone, and then subsequent to the parking code being updated? But I think we hear loud and clear that we definitely needed to go back and do something about it, 'cause the way it is, it doesn't work. Or it's not seem to be working correctly, I guess, so.
I, I have full faith in y'all, y'all, I'm sure you'll come up with something great there.
Sure.
The, the one last thing that I had is, it was mentioned earlier about getting a certain, in, in the transit district of the downtown, having, or maybe other areas too, but having a lesser requirement for that, especially if, as was said earlier, you, you can get in with the, uh, transit passes of some kind, so that, that's, but, uh, other than that, I think you've done a heck of a job on this.
Sure, well, thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Commissioner Rossler?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Turlock. Um, you, your recommendation on commercial, i- it seems to me that, um, at least as far as traffic generation rates are concerned, uh, there's a difference between local community and regional centers. Did you find that in our, in our, the size of our par, our strip centers versus, uh, the community centers with a grocery store versus the Target Center? Did, did you find a difference in, in the amount of parking demand there?
Per thousand?
Per thousand, yes.
I'd have to think about how we did it, but yes, I mean, typically in our model, we see, and when we collect data, we see a difference, and that's how we, how we looked at this here. And I could break down, I'd have to look at the list, but yes, we're treating something like, say, a Target and a Walmart center differently than a center that has, we looked at several centers, say, with a drugstore, like a CVS, and, and Starbucks, and that type of thing. So the ratio, let me see here, you know, we, like, the difference between community shopping center and a regional shopping center. Um, now, in your case, the requirement's the same.
Okay.
Um, usually, I think, a regional shopping center, we do see more demand.
Right, right, okay. Um, secondly, um, in the study, did you consider the number of families that are living in, uh, existing multifamily, uh, developments?
No.
Okay.
Now, I'll just say, that's the first answer to a question, no.
The simple answer is no.
The simple answer is no, I mean, first of all, it's very hard to determine that. When we look at anything regarding parking, we look at number of cars. And we, I mean, the model's very interesting, you know, when we model these things, but usually, we, we don't know exactly a reason why it's happening, but we collect enough data, we, that we say, we see this many cars, so this is what's going on. What the reason for that is, you know, we're not sure. Is it sometimes that you have a lot of families, a lot of people living in a, in a apartment where, you know, say, you know, generation or two ago, that would not be happening? Maybe. On the other hand, overall, we see, per household, per family, car ownership typically is going down, even in suburban areas, but maybe you also have people doubling up. Why is, is, no, we couldn't get, we didn't get into that, and part of the problem, I think, you know, as we investigate these things, is really, you know, to what extent, I think a question came up about, you know, enforcement and inspection.
Right.
Very often, de facto, parking is used to regulate things like land uses, not the other way around. So in this case, no, there wasn't any way that we could determine that.
That, thank you very much. And then, a couple of comments for, for Patsy. Um, I, I'm not sure where the city's at right now with parking enforcement. Do we have a parking enforcement officer, uh?
We do.
And, I, I, I think this effort's gonna require that to be expanded, and that's gonna be a, a budget, uh, issue, and, and so, I, I, I think, from my perspective, I would, I would encourage additional enforcement, uh, although that's probably gonna raise some concerns. And then, I, I completely agree with what John was saying about the mixed-use. I think there are certain, uh, areas of town, uh, the downtown, South Santa Fe, maybe North Santa Fe, uh, where, um, if we can create a pedestrian environment, uh, the mixed-use is a requirement. Uh, down south, uh, down and up and down Melrose, where it's mixed-use, and it's done for, um, it, it's done for flexibility and land uses, then the, if they choose to go commercial, or residential, then they need to meet the, our mixed, or our, uh, multifamily residential standards. A thought on the Breeze Hill project, um, I still think that they could make that a mixed-use project, uh, by, with ground floor commercial right in back of, of the CVS, and then- and then residential behind it. And I think that would be, I think that would be worth modifying the parking, but that was just a thought.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes, a couple of questions. Did we study recent multifamily development and find out what the impact of parking been, what, on the surrounding areas? For instance, Avalon and other places, do we know what the impact has been? I mean, we have open meetings and people complain about all that parking, but did we do a study to find out just how bad that impact is?
Well, we've
On the surrounding neighborhoods?
Part of what Stefan's been looking at, we try to understand first off, in terms of projects that have been built or completed, existing in the ground, what they got as far as parking ratios. We wanted to understand whether there are existing problems in other parts, not just the ones that we keep hearing about, not just Avalon or Breeze Hill. We wanted to go other parts of the city to see if the same thing is happening in other parts of our community. So first things off is, we wanted to understand what ratios they got at that point, were different parking code, different ratios, or maybe there were special provisions for that project. So we had, we did part of that kind of an assessment, so if you will, of certain projects, large multifamily projects. And Stefan looked at, for obviously for the parking count, he had his staff visit some of these, including the Paseo during nighttime, to see what kind of activities were happening there. So, yes, we are, long answer to your question, we're trying to understand. And based on what we've seen, and Stefan, feel free to jump in, as far as the issues that we see, yeah, there is spillover. I mean, nobody's going to negate that fact. But again, is it only because people are, just too many cars? Or is it because of the fact that they're just not properly using their garages? Or a combination of the above? So there's all kinds of things that are, the dynamics of parking is complicated because there's no one way to pinpoint, there's only one problem. It's not that, I think it's a combination. And then we talked a lot about parking management. We've had in previous meetings about the fact that it's a management issue onsite, and we people are controlling and understanding what their residents are doing or not doing correctly. So a lot of that plays a factor too. Because there's several projects that we looked at that seems to be working fine. And nobody's, there's no complaints surrounding the area, but in some of the older projects or multifamily projects, but it varies. It's a difficult, it's a difficult subject. And nobody's going to say that, yeah, we have the one solution and it's going to fix it all.
But shouldn't we have a definition of existing conditions? You know, what has been approved in the past, was that a good decision or a bad decision relative to parking? Did we, did we, are we under utilizing the parking? Is there such a demand that it's having a very negative impact on the surrounding community? I think those are important questions to be asked.
For sure, those are important questions. And I think also the timing factor, over time, the need for, or the need for parking or the dependency on the car. Whether people had many cars and the car's becoming more and more affordable to purchase a car. So you have multiple cars in one family where before may not have been as common. So I think the economy, over time, 20 years passed, things change and contribute towards, you know, what we see today or perceive today to be a problem. There's a lot of that, the factors that can change over time. But our goal is to, we're trying to get obviously a better understanding of what the problems that we hear these recent months, and trying to see how that can play a factor in how we make the recommendations. But again, yeah, it's, it's a complicated issue anyways.
Do we have any, any data that would tell us whether having a higher parking space demand in Vista has had any impact on development in Vista? I mean, it seems to me that the man for building in Vista is about as high as it's been in 10 or 15 years. So the higher demand or the higher requirements for parking does not seem to have impacted the demand to come to Vista to build.
True, good point. That's, that's a good point, because after the general plan got updated in 2012, we didn't see like, you know, a downturn. I mean, we're seeing an upswing after, subsequent to that, because everybody knew where we're going to go in the next 20 years or what have you with the general plan. So, yes, I would agree with that. We haven't seen people, oh my gosh, your parking rates are too high, I'm not coming to Vista. You know, that's not what we see. But then again, keeping in mind, what we have seen is a, an influx of residential projects. And that could also be attributed to just overall need for housing, vacancy rates being low. So not necessarily because the parking is great or the parking ratios are low, so we're going to come to Vista. I don't think that's what's triggering, quite honestly, the influx. Because if you look at commercial, we're not getting a lot of commercial. In fact, there's been, on the other side, there's a lot of empty spaces everywhere still. And if it were attributed to parking, we could say that perhaps that's, you know, causing people not to come, but I don't think that's true in the whole region per se. But certainly is a factor, as we talked, and Stefan talked about it, and he slides about the cost and how much space it takes, and if it's not utilized, it's just sitting there for nothing. It's like the Walmart parking lot, you know? It's just the sea of parking and empty pavement, just nothing. I mean, it's just basically not contributing to anything.
We do not have any big spots for a big box shopping center or a Walmart or a Target, do we? Potential?
Oh, potential.
Open space to where somebody could build that kind of?
Or a larger, another regional shopping center? Not, no, not that, we're pretty much built out.
So that's really not an issue?
No, we're pretty much built out.
We're talking about infills of, they can, lots spread out throughout the city.
Correct. And that's what we're trying to do, is saying, how can we better utilize our, those spaces that are not just being efficient, I guess? Again, I understand and I remember Commissioner Carroll's comments about quality of life, but if we're thinking about economic development, where it's not contributing towards those factors, so. So that's the hope. That's something that we want to do or look at for the future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question about underutilization, and I'm not sure if that's a Stefan or, excuse me, Ms. Chow. But so, to try to wrap my hands around it, does that mean that on a June after, a Wednesday afternoon in June, the Target shopping center should be 80% full? And if it's?
I don't recall the exact percentage, but something like that.
Okay.
And again, that comes down to a design day, where, I mean, there are cities where you will build to an average, and if you build to an average in December, people are circling and circling.
Okay.
Sometimes you want that, sometimes you don't want that. That's something of a policy call or a market call. But yes, that's a good example. In June, it might be 70 or 80% because you have built to December. And in December, you want to have enough, because that's when you generate most of your sales. But in December, if you have more than enough, then that's a real issue, just in a nutshell.
Yeah.
For retail.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you. I think the commercial, you know, the analysis and recommendations, I think all that's fine. And I think, as I mentioned, that's where the, you know, the idea of economic competitiveness comes in. But I want to see if I can phrase further my concerns about the multifamily parking. And that's, and then that's doing a study to come up with an ideal minimum number of parking spaces needed for multifamily, then setting our standard at that ideal minimum, and then building to that. And then in the example of, say, a 100-unit complex, we've built to that ideal minimum number of spaces. It only takes a few extra cars out of 100 apartment units to impact every resident there, every 100 units. Can be, will be negatively impacted by just a few extra cars if you've built to that minimum ideal number. And I, so I don't like this notion of coming up with, we can get by with this as a minimum, because in the real world, that, that's not what happens. And we have to bump that up and have a safety factor for multi-use based on all the things that get thrown at us and all these, you know, shared family homes, you know. I just, that concerns me of just saying, okay, we've figured out this is our minimum, let's go with this minimum. And I know we're not proposing, the state's not proposing to reduce those, but just to approach it from that, that angle, I don't, I just don't like doing it that way.
So let me just make sure I understand and I'm on the same page. So just to take an example, on the residential apartments on that slide, the chart, we're just breaking it down by the studio, one bedroom, two and three, and it gives you the, starting at 2.33. That's currently what's in our code, which again is different than mixed-use, different downtown specific plan. Commissioner Carroll, I just clarify, are you suggesting that the way to go is perhaps to revisit those numbers to allow for more or require more parking spaces that we currently require right now?
You know, probably if the mixed-use thing was fixed, it would, in my opinion, it would probably just fix it, fix everything as the numbers are. I think, I think the shortage, my perceived shortage in parking is stemming from the higher allowances, I mean, the lesser allowance.
In the mixed-use.
In the mixed-use.
Okay, yeah, because the projects that we have had recently are mostly in the mixed-use zone, and I think that's what's causing a lot of the outcomes. Because the ones that we have seen are not in the multifamily zone, which would require these ratios instead. So I think, yeah, for sure, we need to go back to the mixed-use zone.
Yeah, I'm just used to, we design with safety factors.
Yeah.
Okay? And if you have this perfect world, ideal number of minimum spaces, you have no safety factor. And so, boom, there's an impact to everybody that lives there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Looney, please.
Thank you. A different kind of question with a different perspective. It was, the comment was made that the availability of parking can determine the number of vehicles that a resident may have. And in looking at the area of the courthouse, where we've got a number of apartment buildings and living units there, can engineering, and if it is engineering department's responsibility, is it possible to begin to remove some of the street parking from those current streets where some of those are painted red curbs? Or maybe there is a two-hour parking limit? It comes back to what was said about parking enforcement. But for months now, we've been hearing, you know, don't build Breeze Hill because of the parking. We've got the parking issues with Avalon. Is it possible for the city engineering department to begin to phase in red curbs on some of those streets to where we don't eliminate all parking, but maybe we can stagger some of that parking where we develop an open space, open street space, so to speak, on some of those streets? Maybe the limited number of street parking spaces would thereby reduce the potential ownership of additional vehicles within the existing units? Because we can't manage those existing properties. But does the city have
On the street.
The authority
Right.
To control what happens on the streets within the city right away?
Yes, yeah, good comment.
Just a thought.
Good comment. That's what, one of the comments in the last meeting was, you know, I'm just saying what we heard at the last meeting, pay for on-street parking downtown. I don't know. I mean, just, just things that people were saying, or limit the amount of parking on some of these residential streets, because it's, right now, you're just able to go there and park on it. But, good comment. So, with stuff that we have to, and obviously I'm making notes of these, but stuff that we have to look at.
Commissioner Rossler, please.
Possibilities are, sorry.
One thought that I missed prior, I think Mr. Turlock was, was right in his discussion about proximity. If the on-street parking is closer to your unit than your garage or carport, you're going to park on-street. Doing the studies in the O'Ty Ranch on how far people would walk to a transit station, we found that people are lazy, and they will, they'll walk the shortest distance that they can. I kind of agree with Commissioner Looney. My concern about limiting on-street parking is that there's already a demand and where those cars are going to go, and are we going to push them off? Spillover into residential streets in the, in neighborhoods? And we'd have to be, I think, very careful about that. However, red curbing for sight distance coming out of driveways would be, would be a balanced solution, I think. So, just a thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal, please.
Thank you. I'd like to just kind of mull over the enforcement part of this a little bit more. If we're talking about the city doing enforcement, then we're talking about somebody driving around and looking to see who's parking where. And if there are time limitations placed on, say, for example, on-street parking, are they overdue and that sort of thing? So there's that part of it. But then there's parking management by the owners of the, of the residential or commercial properties. And I'm wondering if, and I'm just wondering, is it possible to make sure that employers, say downtown, absolutely require that their, their staff or employees park in some other place than right across the street in some other business person's parking spaces? I mean, is there, is there some way to get a handle on that? I don't know. We have residential, multiple residential places where they have been told they are to park in their garages and not use the garages for storage, all right? Is there some way that, that we can mandate that the management of these places go inspect the garages? Or is there a sticker that they, that people have to put on their cars if they live there? And if their car with that sticker is found in the wrong place, then there's, there's a consequence? I don't know what's possible. But it aggravates me when, when the management that's possible isn't happening. And I don't know what's possible.
Yeah, that, if I can just make some comments on that. At the last meeting, a lot was said about that and parking management onsite, and whether it's addressed in the CCNRs or the manager onsite is aware of all these issues happening, how do you control bad behavior for purposes of using garage for other than parking? Or for other, you know, examples that you brought up, Commissioner Jackal? So there are tools that are available, it's just, you know, does the city get involved in that or not? And I think that's, that's the bigger question policy-wise, is in terms of, what can we as a city do that's within our control and reasonableness? And how do we, you know, convey that to the public? But again, we don't want to start becoming part of something that's a private matter because it just gets into a situation that we're trying to, you know, getting there too deep beyond what our task is at hand, so, anyways. But there's a lot of that was said at the last meeting about that, so.
Staying with Commissioner Jackal's comment, which I think is an excellent one about garages being used for more than just cars. My mom lives in a very nice suburb in San Gabriel Valley, and the city of West Covina, along with their trash company, which I don't know who it is, twice a year, they have a pickup day. And residents can put anything and everything curbside, and, you know, off goes that couch and those three mattresses, you know, that have been taking up. And it really appears to help. And I'm sure that that fee is probably built into the trash, but maybe EDCO could play a part in helping to free up our streets by, you know, unloading our, the stuff in the garages. Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you. Just real quickly, along the same line that we're talking about, the streets. Just real quickly, uh, along the same line that we're talking about the, uh, the streets being red marked and stuff like that, it comes back to the thought that you had mentioned earlier that really caught my ear, where it said about pushing the cars off the streets versus, or pulling them in is what, you know, into their parking lots. And this is an opportunity to put, to phase in something along those lines where we could do, as was said here, uh, just the, start with the widening of the entrances with red lines, and then eventually come with some, uh, something else that would extend it, but it, not do it all at once, because you would really drive everybody crazy if you did that. But I think it would be something that would have to be phased in, but I, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Commissioner Carroll, please.
Do you guys remember how that went with North Melrose and the bike lanes?
Yes.
Yes, we all remember.
All right, just wondering.
We all remember that event. Let's see, I don't know if there are other commissioners' comments, but I wanted to give the opportunity to the members and the audience as well.
Before we do that, I would like to, um, Student Commissioner Rudabush, Student Commissioner Ace Avito, any, any comments, any enlightenments from?
Good?
No? Okay.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to open up the floor, because I didn't wanna neglect the audience. I'm, I'm sorry, I have my back towards you, um, only because of the microphone. But if you had any comments, please come up to the microphone, don't be shy. If you have any questions, concerns that you wanted to raise, this is the time, so. The gentleman coming up?
Evening. I just have a couple of comments. Number one, developers are smart. If they're gonna pay $60 a square foot for parking, they're not gonna do it. That's gonna be offset by, you know, the rental space that they could charge. The other thing is, when you put a mixed-use designation on a multi-family location, it, it just skews the whole parking formula completely. Avalon is in a mixed-use location. I guess that's because the restaurants around it, the OGs and the things like that, allow it to have that designation. The Breeze Hill complex, which is one that I'm very concerned about, is also in a mixed-use area. Right now, it's, um, commercial, which they wanna tear down and they wanna put apartments there, but it's gonna be a multi-family location. How they can use the mixed-use ratio for parking in that area just boggles my mind. I just don't understand it. And the property that's gonna, that is probably gonna be coming before you soon, uh, the 2100 San Marcos Boulevard, they want, that's currently designated light industrial. They want that to be changed to mixed use so that they can build, I think it's, uh, almost 200 condos, which is a good idea to build condos, I appreciate that. But they wanna build a hundred-room hotel as well, and consider that mixed use. If they do that, rather than have it be designated residential, that's gonna reduce the parking requirements by almost 150 spaces. And the, I don't know if any of you have seen that proposal, but the, to get into that location and to get out of that location, there's one driveway currently. And there is no, the center median prevents anybody from turning left into it. They would have to go all the way around, make a U-turn somewhere to make a right turn into it. And the only access would be westbound on San Marcos Boulevard going into, I guess it's Palomar or Port Road. Anyway, those are some things I really think you folks need to consider, and that is a designation of, of multi-family in a mixed-use area. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, please.
I have a question about safety. And one of my concerns are apartments that build parking on both sides, and you have to go in this one driveway, and then you park underneath and you're backing out, at the same time you have it on the other side. And then you have a trash container at the end with handicap parking. And there are no sidewalks. To me, that's a major safety issue, and I don't know how we address it, but I think that's an important thing we have to address. You know, how do people, the circulation of people around the apartment from parking, especially where they can't get from the parking garage to the apartment, they have to come out and where all the traffic is. And we saw that recently.
Sure. They have to walk through the drive aisle. I mean, and to get to the front door, or behind the cars, et cetera, much like in the, on a commercial center. Yeah, the, the, the provision of sidewalks is not always the case everywhere throughout a project, just because it's not always in the developers' eye, I guess, the way they lay out the projects, it doesn't always happen. But I know that issue has come up in the past about access to the units themselves, so it's a design issue. Definitely when we're reviewing projects and where the access and the paths and how they connect. So, we have to look at that more closely when we review projects to make sure that there is in fact direct connections and people are not traversing through areas that they probably, is not safe, which is the point that you're raising, so.
Exactly. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments?
Well, last comments in the first meeting. We had a really back and forth on the first meeting, so this is a little different. Okay?
Okay. I think that concludes this, this item.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate everybody coming tonight and, and sharing comments and concerns. What, if I may just tell you what's gonna happen next, uh, we are, have a council workshop that is scheduled for February the 2nd, uh, 2:00 in the afternoon. So, everyone is invited. Again, what we hope to do is, uh, similar to the styles, as far as the presentation and the content is to share with the mayor and the council, uh, the information about parking. Stefan will be there, obviously, so. And at that point, we hope to perhaps, um, based on what we heard here tonight, fine, fine-tune some of our preliminary recommendations that we had in mind, aside from the ones that you saw on the slide. But, um, kinda come back with maybe more fine-tuned, in our minds anyways, but still preliminary, because again, we haven't said anything in stone, it's still a work in progress. And we realize because it is such a, a difficult topic, there's no one quick solution to all of the things that are being said or have been said. But our goal is at the third meeting with the council, we'll have one more attempt added. And then subsequent to that, we'll be able to kind of put down more firm, kind of in our minds, and again, draft form in our, in the staff's minds and the consultants, um, about some recommendations based on what we're hearing. And then hopefully to move forward. Uh, February the 2nd, at 2:00 here, council chambers. Uh, 2:00 in the afternoon.
Commissioner Carroll.
Ms. Chow, so what's the process of, after that, would, when the code ultimately gets updated, will that come before the planning commission or just directly to council?
No, you would, you would definitely be seeing this as a formal public hearing format. So, we're building up to it, you know? So, when you, we come back formally before the planning commission, we'll be getting your, your recommendation, changes, what have you. And then at that point, only after that, we'll be going before city council.
Make our recommendation and then send it on?
Oh, sure, for sure. Yep. That would be the step. Thank you.
Okay. Next would be commission staff discussion, council action and reports. All right. Comments from the community development director, city planners, and the city attorney? Nope?
We actually just wanted to remind you, we might have a meeting on the 16th of February. It might be to consider an early design review item, so that's, might be one thing that might come up.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I guess we are adjourned. Thank you.